May I call this meeting to order? May we have the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Timniak, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, just by way of introduction, this is a combo meeting. We did have a snow event last Wednesday. We were not able to have our regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting. So this is technically a special meeting. We adjusted the time to allow, and we combined some of the agenda items from last Wednesday's meeting, and probably from the Wednesday before that because that was snowed out too, and our budget vote meeting, which had been scheduled for this. What we're going to do is cover a couple administrative items and then go into the, some appointments, and the Sherman School project discussion and vote before going into the budget discussion and vote. Just so everybody knows kind of what we're going to try and do in that way, out of deference to any of the parents or folks that are here specifically for Sherman School, you can do that. Unfortunately, the folks in the Board of Ed, I think, have to stick around for both sessions, so may not help you out quite as much. Any comments from my colleagues before we get started?
No.
All right, then, first up, we have some resignations. And this is for information only from the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee. Anna K. Taylor, unaffiliated, from 105 Meeting House Lane. Her term was 1116 to 1119, and her resignation date was March 21st, 2018. And then a resignation from the Golf Commission, Alexander Grotkowski, a Republican, from 463 Half Mile Road. His term was 1116 to 1121, and his resignation date was March 14th, 2018. Next item up, appointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. This is to the Strategic Plan Committee. Marc Andre, Democrat, 1468 Burr Street, and Andrew T. Grisepha, Democrat, 165 York Road. Any comments from my colleagues?
Thanks, sir. Well deserved.
Yeah, sure. I want to thank both gentlemen for stepping up to volunteer. I've known them both for quite a few years. They both bring a lot of talent and experience to our town and to this committee, and I'm sure they'll do a great job.
The, both Mr. Andre and Mr. Grisepha have been involved in different projects throughout our town. I think they bring some good background in terms of how the town works. As much as neither one is actively on any committee, board, or commission at the moment, I think it helps to have that experience, and I think that rounds out our Strategic Plan Commission. And having, we'll have an update, I think, coming up soon on the Strategic Plan Commission. And I think they've got a very aggressive schedule for moving forward on this. They've got their consultant on board, they've got some workshops set up, and the goal here is to get out and engage our community and get our whole community involved in what this plan is about and how it takes place. So with that, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I know we changed this. Is Mr. Andre here, or Mr. Grisepha? Again, because of rescheduling of this on such short notice, I know that both tried but had trouble making this. All right. Now, moving on to the Superintendent of Schools, item number five. This does require RTM approval. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Superintendent of Schools. Resolved that the Town of Fairfield authorizes the Town of Fairfield's Board of Ed to apply to the Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject a grant for the Sherman Elementary School renovation project at Sherman Elementary School. And further resolved that the Sherman Elementary School Building Committee is hereby established as a building committee with regard to the Sherman Elementary School renovation project at Sherman Elementary School. And further resolved that the Town of Fairfield hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Sherman Elementary School renovation project at Sherman Elementary School. May I have a motion to accept?
Make an motion.
A second?
Second.
And the, let's see, can somebody from the Superintendent's office fill us in on what's going on?
Good afternoon. Sal, I'm here with the Board of Ed. I'll fill you in on this project as we first came.
Well, just that, at the moment, the item that's before us is the three resolutions that I think are pretty boilerplate and standard.
Correct. The three resolutions are required by the Office of School Construction Grants and Review in order to initialize a project for state reimbursement.
Okay, and these are pretty standard. We do this before every project. It goes before the Board of Select and then onto the RTM.
Correct.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Sal, what's our current reimbursement rate right now?
Twenty-six point, I want to say, three-six.
You're going to ask the next leading question? Any rumors as to how that might change during the state budget process this year?
It is locked in right now by, unless there's another law passed, it is, that is the reimbursement that goes for this.
For the two-year budget?
Next July 1, it's possible that it could change.
Okay, that, so that's when the next budget kicks in?
That's when, yeah, that's the next time that they can.
Next July, give me a year on that. July 18 or July 19?
July 19, July 18, they can, I'm sorry, July 19, they can change it.
Okay.
Again, they passed their legislation, Public Act 17-1, had some revisions to reimbursement statutes, nothing earth-shattering to report in there. So our reimbursement rate is going forward for this next fiscal year, July 1 to June 30, 2019.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Sal, thank you. I suspect you'll, we'll be hearing more from you in a moment.
Okay.
Item number six, Superintendent of Schools, and this requires the Board of Finance and the RTM approval. To hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $3.2 million for the costs associated with the planning, design, obtaining cost estimates, and construction for the renovation and expansion of Roger Sherman Elementary School and authorizing the issue of bonds for such, to finance such appropriation. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. We're back to you, Sal.
Okay. Back on January 31st was the first time that we came before this board with this funding request and also the Mill. Mill Hill request, which we've already acted upon. At that meeting, there were some requests for copy of the Ed spec, revisions to the timeline, and also a question about the FEMA, approval of the FEMA cost projection by the zoning department. Those were sent to you back on February 13 by Tom Cullen. He had sent over a packet that also had some information for Mill Hill, but for Roger Sherman had the Roger Sherman Ed spec, which was approved by the Board of Education on February And also had the timeline updated. And the, I believe, the most important item that you were looking for was the Phase III cost review by Jim Went. That was a multi-page document that was sent over, as I said, February 13th. The FEMA letter from, that went through Jim Went shows that the 50% threshold for FEMA, 50% threshold is $2.61 million. Items in our cost projection are $2.555 million. And that Mr. Went was in agreement with our projections and separation of the various costs that we were within the FEMA limitations for this project.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I see the numbers, I see the projections, and I see Mr. Went's letter and all that, but tell us from your perspective today on the record, where are we at risk? Where can things go a little bit outside the boundaries of where we expect them to be? And how could that happen? Where might it happen? And what risk does that propose or present to us as we get through this important project?
Risk, you can have a risk. There's any unknowns in the, as you're doing the project, as the project's underway, if you encounter a, say, a hazardous material unknown, you open up a wall and you're finding an abatement that you weren't expecting. That's a cost overrun. I believe abatement is exempt.
That's one of my questions.
But something like the addition on the, for the stage on the gymnasium, if you ran into, say, we had a blast, that's the one place where there's ledge on the site.
Beneath the stage area?
Where we're planning to put the stage and they had a blast or have some excessive excavation, bringing a hammer or something like that. That could be a cost overrun. That would not be exempt. That's part of the construction.
Right.
But I believe that there's enough wiggle room to handle something like that. I'm not seeing, for what we're asking, for the items that are in the scope of the work, something that's going to have a large risk on it as far as upsetting the budget. If it did come to pass, it would have to be offset by something else within the budget to remain in the 50% count.
Right. Does he have anything else if I ask a few?
No, go ahead. I'm all.
Sal, one, thank you, and thank you for calling. I know he can't be here today, but appreciate the comprehensive packet that came back in response to our first questions. Couple of things as we go through this. It says the, in looking at this Board of Selectmen backup summary dated March 7, 2018, underestimated cost, this is the cost of the project is 3.2. The number's based on similar projects. This cost number must not see the amount calculated under FEMA of 50% of value property. We've broken that out, right? So the 3.2 definitely exceeds the 50% value, but the FEMA, those, because of the different costs considered under FEMA.
Correct.
It's really 2.6 is what we're looking at as part of that. So just, just want to clarify what that was talking about. And then it says, under schedule phasing and timing, the renovation addition, to provide a partial renovation addition for the 2019 school year. That's September 2019, and we can get this all done within that timeframe. That's a reasonable expectation.
It's a reasonable expectation. Work would be going on while the building is occupied.
Well, that was my second question, is you can't do that in just summers. How, is there a guideline in terms of what you're looking at, in terms of how the construction will be done while students are in this building?
Well, a lot of, you would take advantage of school vacations and also be working off hours. We've done a lot of work in other buildings and on fortified renovations, working cleanly while students are out of the building overnight, and they come back in the morning. They might see a part of a ceiling taken away and a unit or something bolted up, or hangers or something like that. In a safe condition, it might be not aesthetically perfect, but it's work in progress, and we've gone through that and worked very well with that.
Okay, so the two things. One, we're not planning, as much as things will be in, under, in progress, we're not planning on any actual construction taking place while students are in session?
In class, no. You wouldn't be somebody on a ladder, working on the ceiling while students are in the classroom. There might be somebody in a boiler room working, or some other mechanical space during a school day, but it would not be in a place that would interrupt the students.
So as opposed to none, we're going to keep it to a minimum and away from the students?
Correct.
All right, and we'll take appropriate safety precautions?
As always.
To make sure we leave things in a condition so when the students come back the next day, they're not at risk?
Absolutely. Correct.
Can I follow up on that?
I've got a few, but go right ahead.
Just on that topic, if you don't mind?
Go.
Following that train of thought, if you're going to be working in the evenings or on off-hours, as able, do you think you have a good handle on what your overtime expectations might be to get that work done, other than working straight Monday through Friday kind of a schedule? I'm just worried about getting too close to the, to the top number.
Understood, understood. The schedule for the project has to go, go out with the bid, so even though it is nighttime work, it's not necessarily overtime.
Okay.
Because that's the parameter of the job.
Okay.
If, we would be bidding, like, a lot of projects have a normal work week, as including Saturday, and that's part of the big package.
Okay.
So, you know, you're not paying a premium necessarily for that Saturday. You've got a certain number of hours within a certain window that is supposed to be available for work at normal, normal rates.
Okay. So between the weekends and the evenings, you don't feel too compressed on your overtime budget as you understand it today?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Sal, this is Phase III. Phase II, Phase I all happened. Were they, do they happen under the same sort of work schedule with kids in there, out?
The, the, no, those were both in summertime.
All summer?
Yes. The annex was done. We did overlap with the annex at Sherman the last month of the school year. Actually, it was Memorial Day weekend that we vacated the portables and demolished them and started construction work immediately thereafter. So there was two and a half weeks' worth of work that was overlapping the school year at that point. But for the most part, the work was occurring in the summertime.
All right. Also says here on page two of the document that I referenced earlier, the top of the page, this project will be partially eligible for reimbursement through the State Department of Education. When you say partially, Mr. Timniak asked earlier about the 26%. How much of this project is partial? I realize that keeps you from saying it's 100% exact, but are we talking 99%? Are we talking 50%? How much is it?
Probably 75 to 80% of the project costs would be reimbursable.
Okay, so that gets our reimbursement percentage on the whole project probably down to 20%?
Roughly, roughly.
Okay.
That, that would be your net.
And looking at the example timeline, and it's labeled page one, but we've got establishes a building committee and approves building committee charge. We probably won't get to that till May in terms of, and I don't know if established as a building committee is what you meant by what we just did earlier, which we officially established it but didn't add members to it.
Correct.
They will probably be approved by this board in early May and by the RTM in late May.
Okay.
And the charge in a concurrent time period, does that cause any problems for the overall schedule?
The, to answer your first question, establishing the building committee was the three resolutions.
Okay.
The funding request, if passed, would allow us to start the, the application because we would have all the components that the state is looking for. They don't necessarily need to know that the seats are filled. We can work with the timeline that we presented for making sure that we get the project done in an appropriate amount of time.
Okay, just want to confirm that we're still on track?
Yes.
All right. All right, we answered, I had a note in here about during school, but we've answered that, so thank you for that. And then, let's see, in the rationale for the project in the second paragraph, under enrollment, it says Roger Sherman has increased from 453 students to 470 students, and it expected to peak at 486. In developing the elementary capacity, we used a 24-classroom model. This model is based upon four classrooms per grade level K through 5, with an average class size of 21 for a capacity of 504. But then it says, this facility, when we're done, will have a capacity of 462 students, and I believe it continues on later charts that shows the capacity of 462 will not increase from now to 2027. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you fill us a little bit on the thought process, and then just maybe summarize what we're doing again on the project to define why we're not adding, or what we're spending money on, and the fact that it's not adding any classroom seats to the program, if I understand that correctly?
The program, the classroom count's not changing because that's not the mission of the, of the, of the project. The project's scope is itemized in the capital request for sprinkler, fire suppression system, air conditioning, the drive loop and all of those updates. There is not a, add another classroom. The only addition that we're having is the stage on the gymnasium, which takes place of the removal of the stage in the APR, which creates additional space for the APR, and a couple of sundry spaces, such as a computer room, a computer network room, and a possible tutoring room. So nowhere in the construction does another classroom get added, or converted, or a space converted into a classroom to change the headcount for, for the capacity.
Okay. Just to, because the other projects that this board, that have been presented to this board typically also increase class size or classroom space.
Right.
Typically, to get rid of portables is part of that.
Mm-hmm.
And also address the core. So you're saying, what's the target then for the core expansion you're talking about if it's not related to the classroom size?
It's the increase of the APR capacity.
Okay, when you say two, what number?
200 is the capacity that we're shooting for in the APR. That allows us to bring in two grade sections simultaneously for lunch.
Okay.
We're a little tight on that now. And the stage as it is right now is not handicap accessible. It's a little bit difficult to make it handicap accessible. So that's the reason that, that, you're gaining that space for the cafeteria and moving the caf, the stage or platform to another location that makes it more easily accessible.
Okay. And then again, then the plan from now to 2027 anyway, is not to expand beyond the 462 students?
Correct.
Okay. And we say the P, it'll peak at 486, if I remember that correctly?
Yes. Okay, I think that's, yeah, 486, correct.
All right, for now.
Just on that?
Go ahead.
If I, if I'm using the 462 that's referenced here against the 504, that's, that's around 92% capacity, right? And that's, I think that's slightly above what we typically plan at in a perfect world as a percent at the 504.
Correct.
So can you just talk a little bit about, you know, what challenges that might present with, you know, grade breaks and things like that down the road? Because you never know where the kids are going to be, what grades they're going to be in, and how the classes are going to break, right?
Right.
So it, it feels a little tight. So I just wanted to get a little clarity from the superintendent or the board on how best to manage that when and if it happens.
You know, it's a side for Dr. Jones to take.
Yeah, I think to your point, we're basically saying it's going to be overcapacity. With the exception, with the exception of one year, the next decade, it's going to be overcapacity.
Based on what we prefer, right?
Sherman is running at capacity, yes. It's, the building is going to be full. And this really is more about expanding the APR to accommodate for, so that our children will fit in the cafeteria, making sure they have the stage. And then the air conditioning, the mechanical fresh air, those, those are really the main drivers of this project. They do have a number of 482 in 2027.
Right.
And it is highly likely that the building will be full, and it will be running at capacity.
Right.
The additional 15 or 20 students, basically, we can accommodate that because instead of having 21 in a class, we may have 23 in one class, and that's just the way that it falls out. Now, if we had an unusually, between now and 2027, some sort of growth, the board would have to go back and really look at what's happening in that building. And you may have a year where instead of having an art room, you have art on a cart while the board is doing some planning if something really unusual happens in that area of town.
If I could, just to make sure we're working with the same data, you mentioned 482.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at the chart we have at the bottom of page four.
Which one?
Shows a capacity of 462 all the way through, but a maximum capacity of 46 in 2021, and then it stays below that, and in 2027, it's got 471.
Yeah, let me look at that. Do we have four different scenarios depending on what type of capacity? So what you have in there is correct?
Just want to make sure we're talking the same number.
We are, yes.
Kind of argue with that. I just want to make sure, feel it's presented to this board is, are the numbers that you want presented and they're accurate?
That is correct. And the one that I'm looking at goes out one more year. This one's on your Ed spec, stops at 26, 27. I have one that actually goes out to 27, 28.
Okay.
What are the numbers for that one, 27, 28?
Well, that's what I was referencing, the 482.
Okay, that's where that came from.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you okay?
No, I think I got it.
Any more questions on that?
Nope.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Actually, I made a note earlier to call you, and I said, "Call Dr. J." I was like, "Cool, I get to call Dr. J." In the old days, that was quite the title. The, under building systems, an envelope, we talk about roofing systems being multi-plant, multi ply systems, 20-year warranty. Are we talking about solar panels with this facility?
Probably not. The addition would be so small that I don't think you would have a viable purchase, power purchase agreement on that, even if it was, there's a couple of different options for where that stage might go. So even if you had perfect placement, I don't think you had enough real estate to actually put out enough panels to make it worthwhile.
And one, and then, thank you again for including Mr. Went's letter and his breakout description here. As I look at that, again, it references the 50% threshold being 2.6 million and change. It does mention $150,000 contingency on the 2.6. What is a number we typically use for contingency?
The contingency is at 10% of range. Typical range for contingency is usually between 8 and 12. So we kind of split the difference and went there.
Well, 150, 250,000 would be 10% of 2.5 million.
Hang on a second. Tom put his, his notes in here. I think I'm on the wrong page. The construction contingency is roughly about 6% of the construction items.
Yeah, I know, and it seemed to me that we traditionally had something closer to 10% of construction costs.
Yeah, that, I, my memory was that way, too.
And if I'm looking at the FEMA regulation assumptions, it doesn't have a page number, but it's the next page in our packet. It was, I think it was attached to Mr., I think, yes, that's the number?
I believe that's, we're on the same thing here.
Yeah. Says Sherman Elementary School, Phase III FEMA regulation assumptions, substantial improvement, substantial damage. It starts at 5.2 million and change being the value of the building. 50% is 2.6 million and change. The Phase III project estimate is 3.2 million. Proposed FEMA regulated cost estimates included are 2.4 million. Proposed regulated, are 7.95.
Correct.
It, it looks here that the construction It, it looks here that the construction contingency is in the seven ninety-five.
Correct.
All right. So that means that.
Even if you.
Help me in. If we, if we use that, if we use the construction contingency as part of construction, then it would be included against the FEMA cap.
It's possible, depending on what, what that contingency was used for. If it was used for an excluded item, such as the parking lot upgrade, if that two-fifty-five ended up being three-oh-five, that's sixty thousand dollars that we, or fifty thousand dollars that we would have used of the contingency towards that line item would be excluded. So even if you took, following the train, train of thought, even if you took the whole contingency and say by luck of the draw that it all ended up as a regulated FEMA regulated cost and added it to the four, two-point-four-five, two-point-four million, you're still under the cap.
Yep. Here's the concern, just to set the expectations right for everybody. We've got a project of two-point-four million. We normally put in ten percent, I believe, is historically what we've used as a construction contingency. That would be two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Two-hundred-and-forty thousand, we take it over the two-point-six cap. That doesn't mean we can't do most of it, all right? But it does mean that if we use that ten percent, which in the past we have done from time to time, perhaps not on every project, that we can't get everything done within that FEMA cap. So in fact, our contingency max is probably close to two-hundred thousand.
Correct.
So that would be, and that would be something, I don't mean to put you on the spot for that, it's something we'd have to take up with the building committee, but it would be something they'd have to manage carefully. And it means that potentially, and I'd say the biggest risk, risk factor to Mr. Colley's question earlier is what we've experienced on a number of other projects. I want to say every other project, but you get in trouble when you say every, when you say a number of other projects, is that our bids come back higher. So I think that will again be in the building committee's kind of hands to look at what the bids come back at.
Correct.
And, and what they then do or include within this.
We carefully have to craft the, the documents so that there are control, price control points for the building committee to make decisions about.
Yeah. And I think about all we can agree on today, and all I'm trying to get to, is that this project, from a standpoint of meeting the FEMA limit, and that is a hard stop.
Yes, it is.
It's thin on contingency at this point, and potentially the risk factor is that the bids come back high.
Correct.
As they did on the first, I'm going to call it Phase Two, not Phase One. Phase One was adding the.
Annex.
Annex. Phase Two was the actual construction. That came in higher than expected, which is why we're into Phase Three as opposed to having this all done a few years ago.
Correct.
Okay. Just to go right ahead.
Clarification on that. I agree with everything he just said, and I won't repeat any of it. When I read the document, maybe I read it wrong, I read that there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars contingency baked into the seven ninety-five, which is the excluded cost section.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that's a hundred and fifty in that bucket. That's for the non-FEMA stuff, correct? All right? And then over here, when I read the letter, the letter references the two-point-four-oh-five plus a hundred and fifty getting into the two-point-five-five-five, which is still a, still a sliver below the two-point-six-one-zero, right?
Correct.
So I thought they were double counting it. I thought there was one fifty considered over here as part of the construction FEMA bucket that wasn't necessarily labeled over here, and another one hundred and fifty over here within the seven ninety-five, which is clearly labeled. If that was true, then the project total cost wouldn't be the three-point-two, it'd be that plus a hundred and fifty thousand. So I don't know the answer, and I don't know whether.
No.
There's contingency in both buckets. I just, I'm just not clear.
Yeah. What, what Mr. Cullen was trying to point out in the cover letter was that between the cover letter and the analysis page, he's clearly telling you that the construction contingency was considered excluded. But you really, as Mr. Tetra brought up, you really can't say that because we don't know what the construction contingency is going to be spent on.
Understood.
Until, he was, what he was saying is much what I was saying before. Even if the whole thing went to included items, you're still going to be beneath the FEMA cap of two-point-six.
So the reference is even if all of the, even if all of these one fifty were to be included, we would still be under.
Correct.
Okay. And that, and that would use up this one fifty. Okay. I got it.
And that's all, just assuming one fifty is enough of a contingency.
For the whole thing.
For a two-and-a-half million dollar project.
Which, back to your point, is light.
Right.
Yeah.
And even if you fatten the, the contingency to more than the difference between the two-point-four and the two-point-six, here again, you have to watch it, watch the contingency usage to make sure that you have, you can have three hundred, you just know where your stop is on included usage.
Yeah. Specifically, you'd have to go back and not do something. You might not do the hundred thousand dollars for lockers.
Correct.
Right? That's all. But that's, that's what the building committee is going to have to manage, too.
Correct.
All right. And I think that we can't make that decision now, but we want to just make everybody aware that that is one of the decisions based on what the bids come back at and how construction goes as a process.
Right.
That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for breaking that up so we can see that.
You're welcome.
I think, unless somebody has some additional questions, not for me.
I'm good. I just wanted to understand the numbers.
All right. Sal, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay to go to the public?
Sure.
All right. Any comments from the public? Wow. Oh, please.
Hi, I'm Eileen Roxby, Principal at Roger Sherman. I just want to say thank you for considering this project. We've been waiting a long time for this to finally come to fruition. So thank you for, for getting this through.
Yep. I just want to point out that Ms. Roxby was kind enough in part of our exchange back and forth on the impact of the project to invite me down for a tour. I'm sure she'd expand that to the Board of Selectmen either at a convenient time or if we have to schedule a second one that would fit you guys in.
Great.
Happy to do that.
Anytime.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Please.
Hi, Jill Rigara. I'm a representative on the RTM for District Seven. I'm also a parent at Sherman. I have two kids, one in fifth grade, one in second grade. So my daughter in fifth grade has been at Sherman for five years. She started at, in two thousand and twelve, and that was right before Sandy Hook and right before Superstorm Sandy. And I'm, I'm here to ask the board to support this renovation for Sherman. We desperately need it. As you heard from our enrollments, we have a very full school. We're one of the most enrolled schools compared to all the other elementaries right now. And if you do any kind of comparative analysis for the next ten years, we'll stay at that level, being the most enrolled elementary school. Sherman is also the only school south of Post Road, which makes us an incredibly important asset to the town, so that any capital investment in Sherman is an incredibly efficient use of town resources. Sherman is the school by the sound. This proximity to the sound is both uniquely wonderful and also challenging. Being so close to the sound makes our school especially prone to heat and humidity. There are dehumidifiers running all the time. When it gets hot out, the heat is completely disabling. Before Sandy Hook, exterior classroom doors were kept open, which helped circulate air. Now all the doors must be kept closed and it gets stiflingly hot in our beach school. In the seventies, there used to be exhaust fans above each classroom door, which must have helped immensely with cooling the building. Now there are no exhaust fans. It's hotter than it's ever been, and we can't keep our doors open. It's an untenable situation for both teachers and students. We really need the AC. It's a matter of health and safety. Being so close to the sound also means, as you discussed, that we have FEMA regulations that restrict the building's improvements. This means that FEMA regulated costs cannot exceed two-point-six million. So gradual and continual structural improvement and continued maintenance for Sherman is vital. Every year that this project gets delayed is exponentially more costly for this FEMA regulated school than it is for any other school in town. Another uniquely wonderful and difficult characteristic of our school is that Sherman is embedded in a residential neighborhood, swathed on three sides by public streets. The majority of our students are walkers, yet routes to schools, routes to the school are not very safe. We have challenging crosswalks. We're experiencing increased congestion. This situation has led to several near accidents during drop-off and pickup. The police commission recently, in, actually in June two thousand and seventeen, unanimously endorsed a proposal to move parent drop-off and pickup to Fern Street. And two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand of this renovation includes that change, and we really need it to protect our students' safety. So thank you for your time, and I really hope you support this renovation.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, it's back to the board. Any further comments from the board?
Just a quick comment. I mean, it's a very important project that has to get done. The school needs it, the community needs it. I certainly support it. It's going to be tight. The budget's going to be tight. We're going to have to keep really, keep a really close eye on what we're doing and what the building committee is doing. But it's time to get it done.
I absolutely support this with the other two phases which has happened. I'm well aware of the challenges Sherman faces. It's one of those schools you wish you could do, do it all at once. Unfortunately, the FEMA regulations make us do it piecemeal in phases, so I'm ready to vote.
Yep. And I concur with my colleagues, and I think this is a very important project for our community. Obviously, the concern at this level is the unique FEMA structure, which is not something we face in other projects. And it could have a significant cost impact if we don't follow the FEMA guidelines in terms of what takes place. And that's what we're trying to do, do the maximum good that we can in this phase, and there may be future phases if need be for ongoing. But we just want to make sure that, that the school community is clear on kind of what's being achieved in this phase and what some of the risk factors are as we go through. But with that, are we ready to vote now?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ms. Roxby?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we get on to our budget items. Now, these are public executive budget sessions, so we will not be taking public comment. We may have a request from certain department heads who are here to support this. So I thank you for that. So with that, and what I'm going to ask, we've got items seven, eight and nine on our agenda.
Right.
To deal with the overall budget, the fire training facility, which is a new component this year, and the water pollution control authority. Can I have a motion to put all three of those in front of us?
Yes. I'll make a motion.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right. So all three of those are in front of us. We have our budget books. I'm going to ask Finance Department to provide some of the handouts that have been updated And then if I might, from a sequence standpoint from the board, I think it makes sense to take item nine, which talks about what I'm going to call the general fund budget, then item eight, which is the regional fire training facility budget, and then the WPCA for Water Pollution Control Facility budget, as we move through those. Mostly because in the, in the town budget, there is a component of money that goes to Regional Fire Training Center. We probably want to approve that before we take up the Regional Fire Training Facility budget. And if that's okay with everybody, then, let me see. I'm going to, before we go through these spreadsheets, I'm going to, Dr. Jones and I had talked this morning, and we discussed that she might want an opportunity to come up and address a couple of points for the board before we get into our discussion.
Thank you. I, the first selectman and I did discuss at the end of last week's at least two changes to the school budget that I just want to make sure publicly people understand. When I put the budget together in January, we go with all of the numbers that are known at the time. Now that it's March, we do have two areas of our budget which have come in less than anticipated. So we have sixty-two thousand dollars less in pension that is required in the school budget. We also have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our transportation contract, which was just recently settled. So we do have that two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, right around that area, that we could be reduced by and have zero impact to school programming, anything school-related in regards to our needs. So I think it's important just for, for the full board to understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Is there any other component you wanted to talk about?
One of the questions I know I've been asked by Board of Finance and several Board of Selectmen as well is, we did have insurance savings from the current year's budget. And I think that people are wondering if we're being very responsible in how we're handling the budget in this school year. And I want to assure the Board of Selectmen and the town in general that we are doing everything within our power to get to the end of the year and have that six-hundred-thousand dollars still in our account. We're, we're pretending like that doesn't exist so that our Board of Education could make that important decision at the end of the year to have that underspending go back to the town. So that would be available.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for, for filling us in on that at this point, as much as it concerns this year. I think what hit me during our discussion this morning was that between that six-hundred-thousand and the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand here, that's almost nine-hundred thousand that is being returned to the town. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we, we reduce the budget, we don't have to tax for. Six-hundred thousand that we already taxed for, but we've got a savings on the health insurance component. So that comes back to the town in the current fiscal year. So assuming all things, you know, stay as currently viewed. So thank you for that. But I think those are big numbers, and then that certainly, I think, helps this board, as well as other boards, as we look at, at planning ahead. So now.
Just quickly on that.
Go right ahead.
I would like to reiterate, to reiterate your thanks to Dr. Jones and the Board of Education for their communication on these items. As in recent years and recent decades, we've had a really good working relationship between town boards, school administrations and boards of education. And I think this is simply just another example of how we have helped each other out when, when we've had the opportunity to do so. And so thank you for that. This is very helpful. It comes to eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. And again, there's a carryover piece and the two components for pension and bus contract. The administrative adjustments that we can make to the current or to next year's budget are not going to impact our classrooms or our education programs whatsoever. So I think it's a win-win. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
I just had a thought when we were making it there, and thank you for digging into the bills there and finding savings for this budget, so that's good. But it actually struck something up in my head. In this budget, the Board of Ed budget, there was no money budgeted for revenue from the state of Connecticut for ECS, right? But in the town budget, we budgeted money for revenue from ECS. If we do get money from the state for ECS, does that money go to the Board of Education?
Let's be clear on what we're talking about from ECS. You're talking about educational cost sharing dollars.
Yes.
Those are dollars that historically have gone to the town, that become part of our general fund. They're one of our revenue sources, all right? And we fund the roughly one-hundred-and-seventy million to the Board of Ed, and that's just an expense item. So in the last two or three years where we've had cuts to ECS every year, that has not impacted Board of Ed funding because it's a general revenue source. It's not a Board of Ed direct revenue source. So in our budget, we put in a line item for ECS revenue in the town revenue budget. So we're, we're expecting that we'll get that. And if we don't, we'll have to make the revenue adjustments. It's not something that, once we approve this budget, the Board of Ed revenue is set, and whether we get that funding or not doesn't impact the Board of Ed directly.
Got you. Okay. And what was that number again?
Eight-hundred.
Eight, eight-hundred and, okay.
All right. So we've got three handouts here from our Finance Department. One, there, let me call this, the proposed adjustments to the fiscal nineteen first select, first selectman budget. The second one is revenue by department, and the third one is appropriation by department. I'm going to suggest that we initially go through the proposed adjustments to the fiscal nineteen first selectman's budget. It includes both revenue and expense adjustments, and we take those first and offer those as amendments. I'm going to suggest we still go back to the budget book and go through the revenue items and department by department, so we viewed all those as part of our. items in department by department, so we viewed all those as part of our process. So when we vote on the general fund budget, it will include everything that's in the budget book as amended on that. So is that an okay approach?
Can we do this as one whole amendment without voting on each item individually?
Yes.
I think so.
I think we want to talk through each item.
Sure, I'm on board.
But in fact, would you like to make a motion to consider these amendments?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to consider what you just labeled as item number one, proposed adjustments to fiscal year '19 First Selectman's budget.
I'll second that.
All right, and we'll come back and do the WPCA on the back end.
Sure.
Sure.
All right, so I think I'm going to, with your permission, I'll try and talk through these where we can.
Yep.
All right, and if we've got Finance Department here, if we need further backup to that. And I'm going to promptly skip the first item, which is the current tax levy. And we'll come back to that at the end, because I think once, it's a plug number, and you'll see where we're going with that once we get there. All right, so from the top, the revenue items. For object 440, that's PA 12-80, that's phone access, and that's an updated estimate. If it's a, in brackets, it's a negative, or it's an unfavorable, so that's actually a reduction in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Next up, 42312, Town Clerk Conveyance Tax. As we made these adjustments, I did go back and talk to the town clerk and say, we've got about 1.6 or 7 million in there for conveyance tax revenue. Could we adjust that 20 grand in kind of helping us balance out what we're doing? That's approximately a 1% change, and she was comfortable with that. Certainly, that's, we don't fine-tune our conveyance tax down to 1%. Next up is a town dump recycling rebate. You heard about that during the Board of Finance sessions. Based on new information, we will not be getting the recycling rebate to the tune of $60,000 that we had planned.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next up on revenue is the Penfield 1 rental. And Mr. Calabrese and his team went back and looked at, and I was very impressed with the, both their market approach to pricing, in terms of they broke out pricing by Saturday as a group, Friday and Sunday as a group, Monday through Thursday as a group, both for peak season, and then a second segment for off-peak season. When they did that, looked at some different rates they could charge, based on that breakout, some higher, some lower. But in the interest of getting more off-peak business for the facility, they were able to come back with $55,000 in additional department revenue, and that's specifically for Penfield 1 rentals. Mr. Calabrese is here. Will you have any specific questions for him on that?
No, I just thank you for spending the extra time to research there and coming up with this plan.
Again, I want to say again, I was very impressed with the, I haven't seen kind of a market approach on that since my days in the private sector, where I actually broke out pricing by product line and what we're doing. Very impressed with what they did on that basis. All right, so that's it for revenues.
Before we leave the revenue?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Goes to the town dump recycling rebate. I know there was both a revenue piece and an expense piece on that.
Yes.
Can we just get an update? And I believe there's an ongoing contract negotiation that's happening, or something that might be changing. Can we just request an update at some point to this board?
Do you want it right now, or do you want it later?
Later.
Okay.
No. At some point, maybe April or May, so we can see how far you've progressed, because these numbers were pretty fluid a couple of weeks ago, right? Okay.
Sheila, you've got that?
We're now in the follow-up. She provided that information in the follow-up.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're going to have to answer from the podium so that we catch that all for the viewers at home when we do that. But thank you for letting us know it went out in the follow-up to the Board of Finance But Sheila, if you'd please note it, because I think it's healthy to have that come before this board also. So next up, under retiree benefits, we have a retirement contribution to our 401A program. Those are the employees that are not on the pension program, and that was an unfavorable We also had an adjustment to our long-term disability that went out to bid, and it came back as a positive $3,000. And then for retiree benefits on life insurance for retirees, that came back at an unfavorable or a negative $104,000. When we look at active employee benefits, we have a health insurance line active that was updated in February of '18, and this is the health insurance number we generally get at the end of February in time for the Board of Selectmen vote. And that came back with a positive $90,000. And for our active employee benefits, our life insurance for actives came back at a positive $38,000. So we're picking up some good items there. Moving on to the Human Resources Department, workers' comp number came back at an unfavorable However, Human Resources, the liability insurance, came back at a, we made an adjustment there due to a duplication for a positive $41,000 variance. When we look at the Assessor's Office, under Travel and Meetings, we have an unfavorable $500, and that's for the Board of Assessment Appeals. They tend to work late in the night dealing with our citizens and do get a meal allowance as part of that. Next up, under IT Soft Information Technology, and specifically IT Software, we got a positive $75,000 variance due to a revised Microsoft License Maintenance Agreement. And then next up, under Unemployment Compensation, that was a positive $30,000 due to a revised fiscal '18 actual. Next up, under Police. On Maintenance and Repair Automotive, we've got a positive $3,000. This is per the chief, and he mentioned it in the budget hearing, that this is a boat maintenance grant that let us reduce our cost of maintenance. I think you all remember that the boat project that we put through where we purchased a new boat, that's going to reduce our maintenance costs because that was included as part of the costs associated with that. Next up is Solid Waste and Recycling. The items we were just talking about under Fees and Professional, that's a negative or an unfavorable $150,000, and this is due to revised recycling expense. And then also under Solid Waste and Recycling, under Contracted Property Services, a unfavorable $60,000 due to a revised recycling hauling expense contract. Next up, under Penfield, as we mentioned, we did expand the number of events planned. So there were two things going on here. One is that we're moving some costs from seasonal payroll to part-time payroll, and then seeing an increase in part-time payroll for some additional events that we added. It's really just a reclassification of the event or of the cost. Because it made more, and again, as you heard during the Board of Finance discussion, it was more appropriately classified as a part-time payroll expense rather than a seasonal payroll Next up for the Board of Ed, and as Dr. Jones just explained, there's been a reduction in the pension component for $62,000, and that's per our actuaries' revised numbers. And also, per the Board of Ed, a reduction in the school bus transportation because we were able to achieve some cost savings in the newly negotiated contract. And that's $190,000. And then lastly, our contribution to surplus of $2,000, and that just is required to, for our fund balance, and our guideline there is we don't want to do any harm to our fund balance, so we will make an adjustment there as we change different components. When you add all the positives and negatives up, I'm going to go back up to our top item, the current tax levy. And we actually are increasing the tax levy by $13,000. And part of that is because our collection rate is out to, is it four decimals? And when you do that, there's, when we're matching the 300 million, 305 million budget out to four decimals, that's where that comes necessary. It doesn't necessarily change the mill rate, per se, because it's out to that, but it does change the collection rate a small amount. And Finance Department is here. Does anybody like a more detailed explanation on what I'm going to call the plug factor on that tax number?
No, good.
No, I understand it 100%.
All right, then may, this was moved, right?
Yep.
All right. Any further comments from the board on this?
I have one.
Go ahead.
It's a question for Mr. Calabrese, if you would, please. You've got, you've got a couple pieces here. And thank you for the work and for reallocating your resources and your revenue. That's great work. Just want to quickly understand this. On the expense side, you're moving some things around, and net-net, you're adding about $4,000 of expense if you take the 53 and the 49, and then you're adding $55,000 with the revenue on the top line. So is that $4,000 of additional and reallocated expense and resource enough to support the $55,000 of revenue?
We believe so.
You do?
Yep. It's roughly 12 parties or so for staff.
Okay. So you feel good?
Yep, feel very comfortable with those numbers.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions, as long as you have?
No, I, this is, most of the stuff came to us or presented to us through the Board of Select and Board of Finance budget hearings, which were, again, extensive through, for those of you who weren't watching at home. Basically, the last three slash four weeks, two nights a week, and then we had a couple snow events in between. So I, to the staff who showed up to those meetings to help us get this information, which we're voting on today, I want to thank you for your hard work in doing that, especially during what was a crazy, crazy month with snow.
That it was, and hopefully it's done.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, to go to the public?
Sure.
Any comments from the public on these adjustments, and these adjustments only at the moment? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, if you'll flip the page, there's some comparable adjustments in revenue expenses for the WPCA. We can see that current sewer user fees have a favorable adjustment of $9,000 on the revenue side, and then moving to the, oh, first of all, may somebody put this in front of me, in front of us? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to put the WPCA revenue in front of us?
And a second?
Second.
All right. So that was the revenue item. And then on the expenditure side, health insurance for actives had an unfavorable variance of adjustment of $858, and workers' comp had an unfavorable adjustment of $8,541. Those net out to a zero. May I have any further discussion?
Comments?
All right, any comments from the public on the WPCA and the WPCA-only amendments? All right, ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the general fund budget and the WPCA budget as amended are before us. I'm going to point out the two adjourning schedules. If you want to go down, you can literally see what we just did on chart number two, which is the revenue by department. And you can see all that broken out with everything else. And you can see that that, on page two, totals out to 305 million, $324,624. And I'm going to suggest we just go through this in more detail in the budget book so we don't do it twice, but that's a good, I think, a good summary sheet. And thank you to Finance for putting that together. And then the next item, Exhibit Three, was appropriation by department, which really is one line for each department, shows you how many were adjusted and how many weren't adjusted. And also is very much an audit trail that shows that it ties out to 305 million, $324,624. So if that's okay, I'm going to suggest we go through the revenues in the book.
Can I just ask Finance real something?
Go right ahead.
The final mill rate? Do you have that? The final mill rate set? Let me see it on stage.
Good afternoon. The final mill rate would be 2646 for two decimal 48 percent increase. Yes, sir.
2.4 percent increase?
All right, so if we go through and turn to, let's take page 26, and let's go through revenues by source. All right, and I'm just going to kind of read through, not all of these word for word, but by page, so if anybody has any questions, or certainly any comments or...
Amendments.
Adjustments, we can take those, but that way we've looked at every single revenue line item. Once we'll be done with that, we'll go through the department budgets, if that's okay.
Yes.
All right. Now, obviously, we've just made amendments. These are the older numbers, but you can see that under General Taxes, Current Levy, Prior Year's Levy, Interest on Delinquent Taxes and Lean Fees. Then we go into License and Permits. For Planning and Zoning, CBA, the Town Clerk, Inland Wetlands, Filming Permits, Conservation, Police Licenses, Fire Blasting Permits, Dog Ward and License Fees, Building Permits, and that includes electric permits, plumbing permits, and oil and gas permits, Building Sign Permits, Building Heating Permits, Building Fire Protection, some WPCA items that are still in here. You'll see that some are here and some we have zeroed out and just put those under WPCA because it seemed more appropriate at the time. We have the health fees for retail food licenses, food service licenses, rooming house licenses, soil test permits, SEPT permits, rental occupancy, food supervisory, barber's cosmetology, pools, town dump permits, health, environmental, public health. And a total for permits. Moving on, State Education Grants, Aid to the Blind, General Education Grant, School Transportation Grant, School Building Grants, Principal, Interest, Other. And a total State Building Grants in fiscal '19 of zero. State Grants, and all sorts. You can see that as we go through, here's state grants, video grants, private school bus transportation grants, health grant, public school. Then we start against state grant for 911, local capital improvement, town aid road funds, nitrogen removal, municipal revenue, state share, municipal revenues tax share, library, Connecticut, public library grant, elderly tax credit, elderly tax free security exempt for totally disabled, the Pequot Fund, in lieu of taxes for boats, a veteran's exemption, manufacturing equipment exemption, and in lieu of taxes for state-owned pilot program for not-for-profit organizations, and, which is basically colleges and universities, and a hold harmless grant. And that comes out, and that subcategory, to just over $3 million. Then we go on to Service Charges. CWC application fee, MV delinquency fee, FOI income tax, TP and zoning map regulations, Town Clerk recording fees, Town Clerk conveyance taxes. You can see that was in at 1.8 million dollars, or $20,000 is not a material change to that number. In fact, it's just about 1%. Town Clerk certified copies, Town Clerk filing fees, Town Clerk map fees, Town Clerk notary public, recording fees for town LoSIP, assessor map and field cards, conservation, conservation resolution of violations, conservation public hearings, police photo stats, dog ward, sales and redemptions, state reimbursement, state APCP, dog warden adoption fee, fire marshal fees, WPCA road repair, WPCA waste collection, parking department beach stickers, Parks Department beach parking, Parks Department boat dockage fee, Parks Department winter storage fee, compost at topsoil, WPCA sewer use and trunk, which has been removed from here, marine pump-out credit, a series of items, the town dump scale weighing... here, marine pump out credit, a series of items, the town dump scale weighing, town dump large electronics, bulky waste, metal tires, blue bin sales, recycling rebate fixed town dump fixed income and small dump, small electronics, and facilities use charge, human services, transportation, library book rental fees, library photocomp fees, recreation, tennis fees, swim and sail lessons, programs, recreation, Penfield season lockers, Penfield daily locker, Penfield sailboat storage, par three drive, par three carts, par three season tickets, par three fees, H. Smith Richardson season ticket, H. Smith Richardson ID cards, H. Smith Richardson locker fees, golf fees, driving range fees, golf cart revenues, and Park and Authority annual reimbursement. And then miscellaneous for the town clerk, the selectmen, TP and Z, conservation, human resources, return purchasing, finance, tax, doctor, police, engineering, public works, building, park, health, library, recreation, return check fees, and jury duty reimbursement. Fines under the heading of police parking violation fees, police surcharge and MV violations, police alarm ordinance, police dog warden quarantine fees, building penalties, and library fines. Interest, investment income, contra charge in market valuation, and a contra income in bank fees. Contributions, library invested funds, discontinued funds, and we've got a series of those, sale of town-owned property, surplus from discount funds, rental income from school buildings, town meeting, rental income, Center for Women and Families, rental income FTC, rental income. Oh, I should point out on FTC, it was a question, we will be getting a scheduled back that shows our revenue from FTC as well as the town expenses that are associated with that so we can kind of see a full picture of revenues versus expenses for that organization. Last time I reviewed it, it it did track well, and they are covering all the town expenses on that, which makes that an immensely valuable operation and resource to the town. Rental income, miscellaneous rental income from Charles Garden, rental income from Centros, rental income from Old Post, rental income from Chelsea, rental income from the Southwest Connecticut EMS, rental income from the Credit Union, from rental income from Leaf and Yard Waste, lease income from Common Sprint, lease income from Communication Tower, T-Mobile, lease income from Communication Tower AT&amp;T, lease income from Communication Tower Verizon, lease income from Communication Tower T-Mobile. And then 85 Pond Mill LLC, Parking Authority Fairpring rental, parking department concessions, recreation department tennis concession, recreation Penfield concession, H. Smith Richardson concession, recreation J. Darrell rental, Jackie Darrell rental, recreation for field rentals, and recreation Penfield, Penfield Number One rentals. Next up, library room rentals, in lieu of taxes for the Housing Authority and Parking Authority lease. Next up, transfers from reserves, those look like all zeros, under transfers and assessments, bond premium, bond premium sold, that's all zeros, and other miscellaneous insurance surplus for discontinued funds. That brings us to a total of 305 million, 300 actually, since that's amended, can I get a?
amended.
All right, that's 324, I think?
Yep. Yeah, 305.
All right. Any questions on revenue?
Just a comment on revenue?
Go.
The state of Connecticut has put us in a very difficult spot. And this year, we sort of broke from the pattern of not taking the governor's recommendation, going off of best information we have. And I agree, the governor's proposal isn't, I don't think it flies this year through the State House. And then being the fact that the State House passed a budget last October and what the governor actually submitted, I just, I guess my question is more of a long-term thought. Is that going to be a long, are we going to track that out? Or next year, are we going to go back to the governor's proposed? And I know it's hard to it's hard to say that today. But I think it's something we should be thinking about on how we want to handle handle the latest and best information moving forward. Because in the past, the standard had been the governor's proposed budget was what what we ran with, so.
Yeah, I think simply, I think you always want to use the best available information as you as you reference. And I think certainly last year and in past years, we've looked at some of that. What it's clear, and Chris, you've been in some of the same CCM meetings I have, and it's clear from the Connecticut Council of Municipalities, our lobbying group, which brings together first selectmen and mayors from 168 of 169 towns in Connecticut, it was clear that it both from that group as well as from the legislative leaders that we talked to, and those are from both parties and both houses that came before that group, that they looked at the governor's proposal as less than a suggestion. And they didn't take it as anything they were going to necessarily act on or look at. And I think we've seen that because they've taken no action on it. And I don't, I'm not anticipating any action on it this fiscal year. So in looking at that, they may at some point take time and come up with their own. Certainly, the level of politics at the state level is sometimes difficult to determine, figure out, see your way through. But it is clear that that they're taking their time, and they will come up with their own suggestions to that. So I think at the time that perhaps down the road, when the governor's budget is something that the legislative group will consider, then perhaps we look at considering it also. But as long as the state legislature is not really going to take that as something that they're concerned about, they're worried about, or that's going to influence their decisions, I think that it doesn't make sense for this town. And as I've talked to other first selectmen and mayors in the area, they are kind of taking that same approach.
No. And multiple towns are doing that very thing. I I just, I caution us to take into account any cuts we may not like, decide not to budget for them, but then become a reality. I don't believe we did any of that this year. But I just hope next year, I guess we start start on a clean page.
You know, it
We will definitely have a new governor, so.
It's it's simply put, each year is kind of a new page. But long term, we get any more cuts, there won't be any more money left to cut from Fairfield. So good news, bad news. Bad news is we may get cut. Good news is there's only so much left. So at some point, we will stop considering the cuts from the governor because there won't be anything left to cut. All right. Given that's on revenue, any further comments on revenue?
No.
All right. And so let's move on to expenses. And then I'm just gonna, let's take these, starting with page 49 in the First Selectment's Office, and I'm just going to flip through these as we go. If you want to stop me at any point, please do.
Will do.
All right. First Selectment's Office, Town Clerk's Office, Fair TV, Administrative Services, Register of Voters, Town Zoning Board of Appeals, Town Planning and Zoning, Probate Court, Historic District Commission, Shellfish Commission, Active Employee Benefits. And I just want to point out again, these are all as amended. Community and Economic Development, Harbor Management Commission, Contribution to Surplus, and then a group of external agencies, Regional Youth Adult Social Action Partnership, Horizon, Pequot Library, Life Bridge Community Audubon Society, Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority, Fairfield Museum and History Center, Health Minds Connecticut, this is formerly the Southwest Regional Mental Health Group, the Janus Center for Youth in Crisis, Grassmere by the Sea, Sullivan McKinney Elder Housing, the Kennedy Center, Mill River Wetland Committee, the Pilot House, the Center for Family Justice. All right. And then on to private school, bus transportation. Moving on to health and welfare, our health and welfare services. There we go. Then on to finance. First up is the Finance Department, the Assessor Department, the Tax Collector Department, and the Board of Finance, Unemployment Compensation, Hydrants and Water, Emergency Management, Emergency Communications Center, Public Works, First Public Works Administration, Building Department, then on to our Health Department, Human and Social Services, Solid Waste and Recycling. Next up, the Library Main Branch, Library Fairfield Woods Branch, and on to, my book has fallen apart here, the Penfield Pavilion Complex, Parks and Recreation, Waterfront and Marina, the Carl Dickman Golf Course, the H. Smith Richardson Golf Course. And then the Board of Education. Obviously, that has a whole separate document, but it is included as a line item in our and then debt service. I believe when we're done with that, we're up to our 305, 324, 624 number. Any further discussion on the general fund revenue and expenses? Any comments from the public on the general fund revenues and expenses, including the Board of Ed? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
With one exception.
Go ahead.
If we could. I do need to recuse myself on one vote, the Discovery Museum.
Okay.
So if we could carve that out and have you guys vote on that separately, please. I have a conflict. My my spouse works there.
All right. That sounds good. So if we can carve that out and do everything but that, and then go back and do that?
What's the best way to do it?
Yeah, I think you've just cleared up any sort of conflict you have right now.
Yeah, I would I would I would argue that that
You don't have to.
I don't have to?
Recuse yourself at all on that.
Yeah. And just by way of of, as an example, at another board.
Right.
I believe one of the members of the Board of Finance, his spouse works at the Board of Education, I believe he's consistently voted on that budget.
Okay.
And I don't think that has been perceived as a conflict of interest.
I certainly don't perceive it as a conflict of interest.
Well, good. Then we'll just proceed as long as we know. Good. Thanks.
That makes that easier. Any further discussion or comments here? I will come back to the board before we vote. Anything we want to say before I go to the public? All right. Any comments from the public on the general fund budget, revenues, expenses, including the Board of Ed? All right. Back to the board. Any further comments from here? I think we've had some?
Yes, no, I do. I really want to thank the department heads for putting together what I would consider a good budget. It funds the town services the residents of the town have have come to expect right now. The 2.48 percent is right at the rate of inflation for the year. And it's been the area which I think the residents are growing to expect there. There are some things in the budget process which we learned throughout the three-plus weeks we had, some really good things. And I, again, I want to thank the department heads for bringing out and highlighting the great stuff you've done. Some things I'd like to see maybe focus on throughout the course of the next year, one of them being, you know, more of a focus on economic development and big efforts trying to grow our grand list. It's been talked about early on this year. So we had a pretty intense, I don't want to say intense, but lengthy conversation about about what what should we do in as far as trying to, do they need more resources to bring in the grand list growth we're actually looking for as the town? So that's something I think I should really want to keep an eye on throughout the course of the year. Another thing, when we were talking about the Board of Education, which came up, we all know that we have an overcrowding problem going on this year. The chairman of the board brought up potentially doing open choice again this spring. It wasn't included in the revenue It wasn't included in the revenue section for the Board of Education budget. I think that would be the wrong path to go on while we look to deal with our overcrowding problem right now. So that's something I want to sort of put a mark on and highlight. I don't think it's appropriate to be funding, you know, building bigger schools, building bigger schools, having, you know, rising costs come in here, and also be taking in open choice students at the same time. I think we need to resolve the bigger picture first, and if the bigger picture is how we're going to address overcrowding, I think adding students to our overall student enrollment wouldn't be the first step I make on that. Otherwise, I thought the budget process went well, and I'm prepared to support this today.
Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, sir. I want to also thank all of our department heads, the finance department, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Gardner. As usual, they've done a stellar job of providing us with information, getting us updates, answering our questions, and, you know, getting us to the point where we're well-informed enough to vote. What I believe to be a very good budget. It's lean, it's tight, but it provides the quality services that our town expects and demands, so I think we've come away with good balance this year. 2.48 is a reasonable number, and everyone would like zero. And if we did everything that everyone proposed six or eight months ago, it would be, you know, two or three times that, right? So we've come to the middle, and we have a good, lean, compromised budget here that I'm fully prepared to support. And I want to thank the Board of Education as well and the school administration for your being a good partner with us this year and every year, and we certainly appreciate that as well. And I'd like to thank Mr. Tetra and your administration for putting together a good budget for us to work from and to work with, and your department as well for all the hard work that they put in keeping us organized, focused, and informed. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I think building on that, I think that I want to recognize the department heads, our department managers. You know, certainly they're a big part of this budget process every year, but I think that when they went out last summer and surveyed other towns and came up between a reduction in expenses and revenue enhancements totaling close to $2 million that we're able to include in this budget, they basically, just through that effort, replaced GE as a tax contributor. So that's huge when you look at what they were able to do, come back and replace the loss of the GE tax revenue. All right? That didn't, you know, we still had more. We still have lost a tremendous amount over the last 24 months from in-state revenue. And as we discussed earlier, you know, the good news, bad news? The good news is we've only got a little bit less state revenue to go, so when they take that away, we're home-free from the state. But we still had to recover from those numbers and do our best to manage. When we talk about doing less with more, our department managers are doing less with Also want to be clear, as much as we, you know, very focused on both mitigating the impact of those revenue losses, and they were dramatic in the last 24 months, mitigating the impact of that loss on our citizens, that isn't saying there's no impact. I think it's been discussed, and everybody needs to know, we have not been doing as much paving as we would normally plan to do. We have not been buying as many vehicles, especially the heavy-duty vehicles, for public works as we would plan to do. What we have been able to do, and we've also operated with fewer people. We've had somewhere between a hiring freeze and a hiring slowdown in most of our departments, and most of the larger departments are running short on staff. What we've been able to do is keep departments open, keep town hall open, keep the library open, and do our best to continue to serve the citizens, as was mentioned, at the high level of service they've come to expect. We will have to look at how we address these issues in the future and hopefully working with state, but also counting on our department heads to be key contributors and looking at how we continue to improve services, continue to look at productivity and how we move from here on and that. So I want to thank the department heads again for everything they've done, and certainly to Dr. Jones and the school administration for a lot of the information they've provided. And certainly, it's a challenging case with the special ed needs as they continue to cost, and you have a moving target with respect to what the state is doing and not doing from your efforts. And I thank you, the chairman of the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed in its entirety for your support in helping get through all of this. Yeah, as I look at this and I look, as I gave in my initial presentation, the town budget went up just over 1% this year, but that brings us to an average of 0.63% a year for the past five years. The Board of Ed budget was up just about 3% this year, but that brings them to an average of 2.85% a year for the past five years. That's a combined expense-budget increase for the town and Board of Ed this year of 2.28%, but over the last five years of 1.86% per year, and a mill rate increase this year of a 2.48%, which we've been able to make the adjustments we did today and maintain. But that leaves us at 2.03% a year for the past five years, with all the revenue reductions, the improvements in school security, and everything else we've had to build into these budgets. And I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. Again, I've got to go back to our department heads for their support in helping us do that. But with that, are we ready to vote, John?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And Finance Department, thank you again for everything you did, especially the additional schedules you've been doing, time in and time out, to help us get through this process and make sure. So, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Gardner, you and your team, in fact, the whole department, I know they're not down here, but I really appreciate how they've kept everything going through this process. So thank you. All right. We are on to our next item. Oh, no, we're not totally done yet, guys.
No.
Two more things to do.
That's right.
One is-- Oh, sure. Sure. You want to? All right. Next up, let's go look at the Regional Fire Training School. Now, this is a separate item this year, and that's in part because the state built or rebuilt a new greatly expanded fire training facility and then promptly cut state funding to the regional fire training facility. So we broke this out as a separate item so that we could show our taxpayers what's going on and show that we are making this a self-sustaining operation in part from support from other towns for the use of their schools and in part in town funds for our training there, but that is a lower amount than it would be if we had to go to other fire training facilities and support that. And Assistant, or Deputy Chief Dunn, would you kind of fill us in a little bit on how the fire training facility is going to work? Oh, yes. No, we motioned all three and put them before us. We did. We motioned all three and put them before us.
So you just want to know about this year, or were you, did you want to?
Just this year in terms of, this year and going forward, how it's going to work.
Okay. Well, what we're doing, this is our basis, as you said, this is, we're doing this de novo. So we formulated a budget, and we're asking for 58, 950.
Yep. If I could ask that the audience, please keep it down a bit so we can listen to Deputy Chief Dunn. If you need to adjourn to the hallway, please do. Thank you.
And with this, we feel that, you know, if this building closed, it would cost us a lot more in having overtime to bring in our people to train, so we think that we're getting a good deal. Yes, sir.
So we're not paying overtime to send our employees there?
We're not. We're able to do, it's fortunate, we're able to just bring, like, every day we bring our companies down and we run them through there. Today, we're doing live burn. We've been doing live burn for a few weeks. That's not something that you can do in a classroom. So we're using the facility. People are on duty. If there were a large-scale emergency, we would just drop the hose there and we would, you know, respond, so we have full coverage.
So you're not backfilling anybody in for that?
We are not, which, so that's the big benefit of having this, this facility, that we're able to do so much training each day, daily we're down there doing training.
No overtime cost?
We're talking about--
That's a dangerous question to answer. As soon as you say never, ever, or no, but--
To do this training that we're speaking about today, our in-service training, the things that we need to do to keep our skills up. Now, once in a while, there, we do have a training budget, and that's usually to backfill when our students are training up in school, or there are certain things where we have to send people away. We're required to send our fire marshals to fire marshal training, so we have to backfill them or pay them if it's their day off. There are overtime, there is an overtime budget for training in the fire department, but that budget would have to be expanded so much more. Our neighbors to the southwest port, what they do is they build four training days in where they send people up here, and they have to backfill them because they, you know, they're so far away from their districts so that they're not able to train while they're on duty.
So last year, did, last year, did we pay overtime to have them train in Fairfield?
No, no, we didn't. You mean, what are you saying, when--
So when we had--
We were not able to do that training, and it's a dangerous slope just trying, going without that training for one period of time. We did as much training as we could do in classroom. We tried to find places to do certain training, but we were not able to do it when the place was closed, and it was just a physical limitation. Was that your question?
Sort of, so we didn't do the training last year?
Correct.
Correct. We didn't send them to another facility?
No, we couldn't. We didn't have a budget for that.
So is there a drop in, from years past, for training for previous years?
In previous years, we sent them to our fire training facility. When it was open.
I missed, I'm sorry, this night I missed at the budget meeting. I did catch up a little bit on it, and--
Yeah. And--
Deputy Chief, sorry.
Yes. Please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that during the two years of construction, they cut down on their training load. They had been using this facility in the unimproved form previously, so now they can do more with it because it's been improved, expanded, and grown. I'm more than a little disappointed in the state for having spent, I think, upwards of $10 million on improving this and then cutting back on the $50,000 to $70,000 they used to reimburse us for management and improvements and maintenance of the facility. So what, we broke this out separately so we could look at what the contribution of the town is compared to what it might be, so we can see that it's lower than what we might be if we had to go someplace else to do the same amount of training. And yet, we are also focused on getting revenue in from other towns to help pay for the classes.
Yeah, no, so I hear that, and I may, I'm late to the game on this. That scares me because it's not our job to go out there and cover the state in this situation, and they can do this with multiple other services. I can think of across the town. Are there state employees working there?
No.
So we staff them?
We do.
Those have to be new positions.
No, we, that is our training department. It's our training department for the Fairfield Fire Department. We've always had a training department, so those are the same employees. There is one person paid for by the operation of the regional fire school, and that's budgeted for here. But when we run these courses, we run them so that we break even or we make a profit, so we're not, you know, we're not backfilling, the town of Fairfield is not backfilling the training of these regional firefighters.
So who's watching, I guess I would say, our asset now while other towns are using it?
What we'll do is, if it's an outside town, we'll make them hire an employee and pay for that employee to sit there and watch, an employee of the training school.
An employee we already pay 40 hours a week?
No, no, this is a part-time person, like an instructor or something like that, so they may be getting, you know, $25, $20, $25 an hour to watch them, so they'll pay that in their fee if it's at night. If it's during the day when our people are there, then it's just scheduled because it's not costing us anymore to have that person sit.
So how many part-time people do we have there?
We have, in the budget, we have, let's see, there's--
We've got page 281.
281.
And the 280 is the full detail.
Yeah, I actually read that.
So we have a training assistant who is paid for by the facility, and then we have an administrative assistant who's paid for by the town, who does town work.
So all of which you just said, we're operating this facility, other towns are coming in, they'll pay for it, our operating budget's $22,000 for employees.
For employees, yes.
I'm going to suggest, if the total budget for this is $137,000--
I'm looking at page 281.
And I think the Fairfield, for the training classes we run, for our employees, our firefighters, I think we contributed on $58,000 to that.
So here's, okay, I'm with you. So if we have an employee who goes, part-time's 19 and 1/2 hours, we have an employee who goes over 19 and 1/2 hours, how do we reconcile that?
We don't do that. What we'll do is if, that person usually does typically work less than 19.5. If that person was above that, what we would do is we would just bring in a fire instructor. We'd hire somebody else that's able to do that, you know, watching.
At time and a half?
No, they'd be at that fire, regional fire school rate, which is like $22 an hour, $25 an hour, or something like that. It's a part-time rate. These are not--
If we have--
Full-time employees.
But if we have, like, a union, a part, our fire instructor is a full-time employee, right? A fire instructor, are the training staff?
No, no.
No.
They're all part-time staff.
And they're not town employees, per se, are they?
They are. They're paid through by Munis, so they technically are, you know, they're in the budget. We're talking about, are you talking about these, the other people?
When they're not, when they're not part-time working at the fire training center, where do they work?
So, I mean, yeah, I'd jump into the middle of this, and I'm assuming the question, so forgive me if I, just from the brief part that I heard. Some Fairfield firefighters teach at the fire school. They get the fire school rate. They don't get the Fairfield Fire Department rate. It doesn't impact--
So that's like a second job for them?
Correct. Correct. And as far as the other question about 19 and 1/2 hours, if a, one of the employees listed in the schedule works more than 19 and 1/2 in any one week, we make sure that over the year they don't exceed the 10, 1,014 hours that calculates out to at 52 weeks. So we may have an employee during a very busy period work 30 hours. The following week, he or she would have to work, or over the rest of the year, less in order to meet that average of 19 and 1/2 hours over 52 weeks.
And I believe that's a standard practice in other departments?
It is. And we have worked this through both the union and with Emmett Hipson, the personnel, because there was a question about, there were some during the transition from the old school to the new school, we're exceeding 19 and 1/2. We have corrected that, and everybody's working, on average, 19 and 1/2 hours or less per week on average for the, calculated for the year.
If I just circle back to my original thing, and thank you, I'll take those. The facility's open at night for night training?
Well, it's usually closed. If someone schedules something at night, then we'll make arrangements to have it open.
So we're now driving this because we need the revenue, as much revenue as we can to offset?
Yes, that's a big thing, yes.
Right? So we'll take any scheduling appointment anybody wants to give us, and if we go back to, you know, we have someone watching the shop on the weekends and at the night--
Right.
And during regular Fairfield training hours during the week, I'm not, I don't know that I'm seeing enough personnel on the part-time side to cover all of that. I mean, that's where I'm missing it.
No, see, well, because what happens, suppose like there's supposed to be something tonight, maybe an EMT class. What we'll do for them is, we know them, and we'll just let them use the building. We've trained them how to open and close. We trust them. There's a couple people that we do trust to do that. If it's an outside agency, suppose it's any town fire department comes in and wants to come at night, what we'll do is we'll assign somebody. Now, this could be somebody who's a fire instructor, who maybe teaches the course, might be a Norwalk firefighter or somebody like that, so we'll pay them that instructor rate, and they'll stay there for, you know, two, four, six hours, or, you know, whatever it takes. When we build, we will build that department back, so we would never do this subsidizing, you know, this regional training, this extra training.
And I'm assuming it's our insurance now covering this building?
It is, yes, the town insurance. They've broken that out. That's also reflected there.
And there's no rules in here that we need to have town personnel at our building while we're essentially running it out?
Well-
Because we trust them?
Well, yes.
Okay. So under that theory, we could have like nobody at the Fairfield Museum or nobody at the library and we trust the Rotary Club. So we don't need to have employees there to keep the building open. And that doesn't, that's not working in my head, but that's, I'm sort of, sorry, I'm late to this. It just doesn't, it's not adding up, but that's okay. The total number of hours we want the facility open to generate the revenue to offset, the realities I have and I know about in operating any municipality, any municipal building with town personnel there, with our insurance liabilities, with the part-time overtime rules, and this definitely being the first year, so I know we're ironing all this stuff out, but I think I just laid out three concerns I'm definitely going to watch on that and how it's done.
Any background at the moment on that or is that something we're going to work through this year?
So during the day, during the week, there is no overtime because we have a town employee that works out, our training director works out of the regional fire school. So that 40 hours a week is covered by town employees. At night, we are driven by a break-even concept, not necessarily covering the entire cost of the school. Any program at night has to cover 100% of the cost of that program. If there is a part-time salaried person there minding the store, then we bill that entity a fee to cover the cost of any of that part-time help that is occurring to keep the doors open and the lights on.
And we also, if organizations use our building at night, fire departments, they also have to sign a document that's been approved by our corporation and council here. So they do sign a release of liability.
So I guess I come from the philosophy that, you know, that's growing, you know, that's taken on the state's responsibility to do and, you know, that's more, you know, I think the more we do, the less we do well and I think we're overextending ourselves and I think we have a lot of areas which I just laid out and unfortunately for the first time today as concerns, which we can't vet out until we actually experience, so.
So if I had just commented, we are not growing the regional fire school. The regional fire school has been in existence since 1972 when established by the Connecticut Journal Assembly as a regional fire school. What has changed is the state has stopped subsidizing the regional fire school. We have been operating in this manner since 1972. As a matter of fact, we're trying to get back up to the level of engagement and performance or offerings that we have had historically. So we're not adding programming although there are some, like the next three days, we're doing active shooter integrated response program for police, fire, and EMS and dispatchers, which is different than what we have done in the past, but we have typically offered a very wide assortment of training for firefighters from around the region and essentially around the state. And what we're doing now is no different than that. We are now covering 100% of the cost of those programs. We didn't do that in the past. We would offer courses like firefighter one and firefighter two and run them at a loss because we had a state subsidy that was helping us pay for that. We are no longer offering those programs. We're only offering the programs that we can break even or generate a profit. And we are charging a fee for use of the facility anytime a non-town of Fairfield use, non-Fairfield, a town of Fairfield use of the facility. So there is a daily fee attached to all of those programs.
Yep. This is the first year we're going through this and I think that the point you're making, I entirely agree with, which is the state left us an alert by sitting here rebuilding the facility, making it bigger, increasing our utility costs-
Yeah.
-all right, which happened with or without people there to some degree. And then stripping out our subsidy. They cut it out of their budget. They didn't tell us they're going to do that ahead of time. They didn't say, hey, we're going to build this out. They said, hey, we're going to build this out and, you know, you guys will operate like always. And then they stripped away our money. So I think that, I know our chief is working hard and lobbying our state delegation to help get that put back in the budget. It's not a Fairfield issue alone because there are five regional training facilities that all are up against it in the same way that the state cut funding for all of them, not just ours. What makes it unbelievable in this case, they spent $10 million to make it bigger to increase the cost to operate it and then cut the subsidy, which makes no sense. And if they told us that ahead of time, we might have made a different decision as to whether we let that expansion take place in our town or let them experiment someplace else and sort it out. So there's no question and the chief and deputy chief have basically put together a plan that says it doesn't, it costs the town less than if we shut it down entirely, which was a discussion we had, do we just shut it down and put it in mothballs until the state comes back with their subsidy? But then if we're going to keep our ongoing training going to the extent that we need to, even though we reduced that for the last two years while it was under construction, but all anticipation of it would be up and running and we'd get back in there, it would cost us more per year going forward than it does to operate it because we can take advantage of non-overtime hours to get our guys trained there. But there's no question, the state pulled, I want to say bait and switch, I don't know if that's the right term?
Well, I can think of multiple things they could do the same thing with. Was it ever a state building?
No.
No, it was always ours.
It was a federal building.
In 1960.
And the Nagy site existed there. When the Nagy site shut down, they gave it to the town of Fairfield, I'm assuming for a dollar, which created the fire school for the town of Fairfield. And that was in the late 60s. In 1972, it became a regional fire school.
All right, one more time. How many, one training officer who's already in the budget, he's just now stationed there permanently?
Right, he's always been, he's the Fairfield fire training officer.
Oh, so he's there in how many part-time?
There's one administrative assistant and then there's also-
A training assistant.
Yeah, it's a training assistant. It's in our budget right here on page 281.
Yeah, so two. So what do you do if you have a part-time person? There's a lot. Well, if you have a part-time person who's exceeded whatever, I mean, you say you can't come to work for the next five weeks?
No, true, but our part-time training assistant usually doesn't work the full 19.5. He comes when he can, he'll come a couple times a week and he has been under that threshold. But if he did approach it, as the chief said, we would limit him.
The cost of part-time help that are associated with keeping the doors open are billed to, it's not in our budget. That is three hours tonight to keep the doors open and the lights on when Shelton comes down in training. That's billed to Shelton for the cost of using the facility.
Yeah, but there's still all-
So it's not represented in, that's not a Fairfield town employee working that part-time. It's neither one of those people.
And who is there?
It's an instructor that we hire to open the building and supervise the use of the facility.
And that's a town part-time employee? Or is that a consultant?
It's a part-time training employee, not necessarily town of Fairfield. It could be just a part-timer, one of the instructors that comes in.
So why doesn't Shelton just hire him?
Because we want to maintain the control of hiring that person.
Okay. All right, I'm watching it because I want to see how this unfolds.
And I think that you alluded to it. This is our first pass. We were asked to create a brand-new budget that didn't exist before and work through all of the bugs of developing the budget. So this was input from the DPW, from risk management, from the finance department, and the selectman's office as well as the department. Chief Bissin created a business plan that created, recreated the offerings of training and developed a fee structure for use of the facility that covers 100% of the cost of the outside use. We were asked to create a first-pass budget so that we could test out all of these theories and funding mechanisms so that next year we would be better than this. And, you know, what I have represented to the board of finance is that I expect that next year we will do better because we will find different ways, one, to bring costs down, in particular solar on the roof will bring our utility costs down. We will lobby the state and hopefully get funding restored through the grant and we'll find different mechanisms to generate revenue to offset the costs.
And creating the business plan to do that, I, that's, I think that's way outside of our scope and, I mean, I wouldn't ask the finance department to create, you know, a business plan to bring in revenue through doing outside services for taxes. You know, I wouldn't ask another department to go ahead and create a business-
Trust me, I reacted like this is not something that we do. I understand that.
Yeah.
However, during the course of this process, we identified every single cost associated with running the facility. We didn't know that before. And I think in the, in order to be fully transparent, we have been encouraged by the selectman and the finance director to identify all the costs of running the facility so now we can manage those costs better. And I think that the business plan is what kind of programs do we need to run to one, meet the needs of the public safety community and second, to make sure that we're covering the costs.
And I think that, to be fair to chief, as you pointed out, this is what the state dumped on us.
Right.
When they stripped out that, this is, we could either shut it down or figure out how to make it work for less money than it took to shut it down.
And that's my frustration, what you just said. You know, the needs of the safety community should not be Fairfield's job. It should be the state of Connecticut's job. And we need, like, we need to continue to highlight that and I definitely, I definitely think like, you know, it needs to happen because it shouldn't be our job to make sure that our training facility is open and then we have an issue with Shelton and then we find out Shelton wasn't, you know, doing enough training. It's not our responsibility. It's the state of Connecticut's-
We are not doing that. We're not getting down to that level of evaluating what others are doing. We know what programs benefit us and benefit our police department, our health department, and our EMS community. We understand it because we work in that system. We're offering programs that benefit us as well and I think that it's been represented all along that having the regional fire school in Fairfield, although it's sometimes perceived as a burden, makes us better, makes us a lot better than any of our neighboring communities. They come here to train because it's such a versatile facility that provides so many opportunities. We are better for it by leaps and bounds and I think that that's been true. I tested there and trained there in 1978 when I started my career and it was better than anybody else had in the region and it's now 10 times better than anybody else has in the region and we're very fortunate. And yes, there is an administrative and a financial cost, but we are addressing those costs and they have been, they haven't grown exponentially over the course of that, some, since it's been created, almost 50 years.
Okay. But the net result is that it costs us less to operate it than it does to shut it down and train elsewhere.
Or train elsewhere, correct.
Right. Because if we shut it down, we'd have to train elsewhere.
Correct.
So from Fairfield's standpoint alone, it's a positive financially from that perspective. And I do applaud you for your work with our state delegation, but also getting your fellow chiefs involved in lobbying their state delegation so we'll get some financial relief from the state, hopefully, in a modification of this budget over the next year.
And are we meeting with the NPO on Thursday?
The MetroCOC.
MetroCOC, excuse me.
All right. Any further questions? No. Any questions in the public?
Could you speak a quick comment?
Please.
Stance Cleary from the Fairfield Health Department, I just want to speak in favor, I know you're not speaking, not in favor of the fire training center, but the value to the community, already have been there to help teach a CERT class. Those CERT volunteers do hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer work for the town, running shelters for multiple days that, that we would have to do it, we would have to pay town staff to do it if they weren't available, or Red Cross, but it would have to be done. It would be thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of, you know, during Sandy, food costs alone were $7,000 for the shelter. Just imagine what the personnel costs would have been. The last time we opened, it was $2,000 for one night for personnel costs, just for two food service workers. We have 10 to 15 volunteers there serving the shelter at night. The, that's, you know, they have about 100 CERT members. We also train our medical reserve corps members there, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers doing hundreds of hours a year. And just to add to that, the benefit to even my staff, we brought our, every year we have annual refresher training, we brought it, the state down here and we didn't have to pay the mileage reimbursement cost for my staff because they don't bring their town cars home. They're not allowed to. They drive from home, they submit those mileage, the food costs, everything related to that. So just those hidden, just alone, those two things, the CERT, MRC, even health staff savings, you know, helps me to contain my costs and my budget so that we don't have to ask for more next year or the next year in terms of training and things like that, that we can utilize that. So that's it. I just want to share that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And other comments in the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Water Pollution Control Authority. Again, this budget's on 285. We've already made adjustments to this and this budget is before us.
Motion to pass, as amended.
Okay. Is there a second to pass this amendment? All right, good. Any further discussion? No. All right. Seeing none from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you. I think we have a request to pause before we go on to the tax collector and the private executive session.
No, we can do the tax collector and then the pause for executive session.
All right. To consider an act upon tax refunds, it's recommended by the tax collector, the amount of $1,000, no, $173,705.33. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
That item is now before us. Any further discussion?
I've confirmed it matches the item in the folder, number of the folder.
Thank you.
It does.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.